I want to start with a question about the One Stop Shop project that was part of our questionnaire. The One Stop Shop project in downtown Fort Lauderdale, just west of City Hall. Jackie Scott, you in your questionnaire, you enthusiastically spoke up in support of this project. Tell us why it's good for the city.
Well, from my understanding of this project, which I want to explain to you that as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, I stayed pretty far away from this because in the event this would be coming to me, I didn't want to be corrupted or not be able to co-opt it, not be able to talk about it. But from my understanding of the One Stop Shop, it's going to be a park. It's going to be a cultural center. It's going to help small business. The city is going to be getting an income from it. And it seemed to make sense to me in the downtown.
Mike Lambrex, how do you feel?
So I think, you know, with my financial background, that's not a deal that I would have struck at all. And frankly, the city really should have sought out a revenue or a profit sharing component to that. If we're going to be giving away or leasing out, you know, public land, you know, really, there's going to be more in it for the city there. So I also would have looked for stronger language in the park and the open space component. So I wouldn't have voted the way it was.
Kevin Cochran.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely against that deal. Like Mike, my business background is all about fiscal responsibility, fiscal management. And at the first outset, I don't think the property was properly appraised. I don't think the lease language was strong enough. While it's intended to be a park, the language is not strong enough to ensure it's a park and to ensure that it remains available and accessible to the public. So I think that there's a lot of outs in that contract. I think it was a badly constructed contract, badly appraised contract. And that's not a deal I would have done in my business.
Okay, we want to hear next from Ed Rebholz. Go ahead, Ed.
I would, to be clear, I would not have supported it. It's a good sized piece of land in the central part of town where a lot of the transportation is hovering. All that land has gone up tremendously in value. To give it away and with a merely rental and no taxes is not fiscally responsible. We owe more than that to our citizens. If we can raise higher rents for development, so be it. That goes into our bank account, not somebody else's.
Okay, thank you for concise and right to the point. Warren Sturman, what do you think?
As president of Real Vista for 14 years, I've thought to add parks and public spaces, including Hardy Park, Stranahan Landing. I would have voted no, 100%. That land was supposed to be a park, did it as a park. I worked to fight over development and add park space, absolutely no. It's the public land, public space, not an option.
And let's hear from Ted and Sarah on the same subject.
Ted is still holding his microphone.
Ted, going once. In fairness to these candidates, I've got to keep the things moving.
Well, Ted told me that he doesn't have a mic where he's at.
Okay, well, then he's in listening mode only, so I will move on. In fairness to you, Jackie Scott.
Yes.
You've heard the perspectives of your, there's a very, very strong consensus in this race that this was a bad idea. So tell us again, you know, what do you think of their arguments against it?
I think their argument is their opinions. I think they might have looked into it deeper. As I told you in the beginning, I don't take positions on things that I don't become well vetted on. And apparently, and as I said, as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, I did not get involved with this project. But what I do know is that we are going to have a beautiful park there. We are going to get revenue, and that's my position.
And just to the last point, the point that a couple of the other candidates made, that at the very least, the city should have found a way to extract some tax revenue from this property.
I agree with you on that detail 100%, and I agree with you.
I've got one more question, and I'm going to ask, I'm not going to ask this question of an individual, but I'm going to ask for a show of hands, or I'm going to ask for somebody to break in and answer the question specifically, because it has come up and we have written about it, that this project is emblematic of a larger situation in the city of Fort Lauderdale, which is that the mayor and the city commission, I haven't finished the question yet.
Go ahead.
The mayor and the city commission do what, Mr. Cochran? Go ahead.
We see many examples where the public land has been given away for overdevelopment without appropriate tax revenue coming to the city. The most obvious example, of course, being Bahia Mar. So I think that, you know, the city in general, very eager to strike deals with private companies and developers. And I think we need to take staff back. And I think we need better fiscal management, better fiscal responsibility, and better planning in general. That benefits the public.
Okay, Ed, you had your hand raised. Go ahead.
No, they seem to be doing this public-private area, and I call it privatization. Giving away things, the water looks like it's going to be privatized. I see a lot of downside. We don't have the control. They're talking about two to three times more expense for a common citizen. I think we need, and Bahia Mar, if I, as a businessman, had an asset that was worth a quarter of a billion dollars, I would have used it to my, the city's advantage, to the population's advantage. We're not going to come upon another 28 acres of land that is available for public use.
Ed, how long have you lived in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Ed?
I grew up on the west side, over on the Rivlin Road. Went to St. Thomas, went to the University of South Florida, came back. We always had a place on the water over here. And that's been about 30 years that we've lived over there. And I've moved to different locations, too.
I wanted to just ask you briefly for a historical perspective, and I could ask all the others as well, but a brief historical perspective on this issue of development and some say overdevelopment. What has happened in recent years that gives you concern about the pace and the degree of development in the city?
You're talking to me?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm concerned with, the jewel in our environment is the water. I'm concerned with keeping that free and accessible to not only our guests, but to our residents. And if we continue to build a lot on the outer island, it's going to be harder for the residents to get out there and enjoy it. I just, if we own great assets, and BMR is a great asset, and yet there was more time on the lease to do what we did do. And also, they keep on saying it's going to be no effect on the boat show. I don't know how that's possible. If you're building out where the boat show is, how do they do boat show? And that's critical to the economics of this, of our area.
Okay. Let me ask, I think it might be you, Jackie Scott. I'm getting feedback because your mic is open when others are talking. So if that's, if it's possible, I'll...
I don't know how to adjust it. I mean, my mic is on, but am I supposed to do it myself? Because I have no idea.
Yeah, it's not a huge thing. At the bottom of your screen, there's an icon on the left of a microphone, which you can take your...
Okay, off and on. Okay, so I'm back on. I'll turn it off when people are talking.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a big crowd here, but it's very interesting. Mike Lambrex, this question may have been in our questionnaire, I believe it was. I want a direct answer from you on this question. When Chris Lagerblum, the city manager, left to take a job back in his hometown outside Atlanta, the city, without a search, promoted an assistant city manager, very capable young man, but he hasn't been with the city that long, no search, and they made Greg Chavarria the city manager. How would you have handled that situation?
I think the city handled it the proper way. Look, you know, Mr. Chavarria was a previous city manager for another city. You know, he's proven excellence with us as our assistant manager. He's our second in line. You know, he's been fully vetted by the city. He's got a phenomenal background, two engineering degrees. I mean, it's hard, in my opinion, to find a better, you know, a better person for that job, especially considering he has the history with the city as well. And, you know, for the city to go out on a full-on search when we have the right guy is something that's costly and just unnecessary.
Okay, same question to you, Warren Sturman, about promoting Greg Chavarria.
Okay, two things. Could I mention about the, they mentioned Bahia Mar and overdevelopment. Could I touch on that? I am the candidate, well, four years ago, I ran this race. I came within 1% of winning. Developers did not support me because of my stand against overdevelopment. Strong stand again over development. And once again, I stay with that. I would not have done the Bahia Mar deal. It's public land, public space. We're not going to get another piece of land like that. As a minimum, add public space and no extension to lease. That was horrible. Four years ago, we all pledged we would not extend the lease. And now it was extended. We've lost that land, and it's a travesty. Okay, now, as far as Greg goes, I think, I like him. I think he's going to do a great job. Although, I think what we should have done is have a search. We clearly should have had a search, go out there, vetted the candidates, reflectively looked at what our goals are, how we're doing. And I think Greg still would have come out, number one, but it would have given a lot more confidence in our choice, both as a commissioner as well as Greg.
Okay, I'd like to hear on the same question of the city manager choice from you, Jackie Scott.
I absolutely think the city made a great choice and made the right decision because Greg's resume is extensive. He knows what's going on in the city. We have so many goals and so many projects and things that are going on right now. The last thing we needed was to put him in a position where he really doesn't have the job. Spend the money on the search while we're also adding three new commissioners to staff to run the city. So I think that they made the right decision, and I have a lot of confidence in Greg.
Kevin Cochran, what's your opinion?
Yeah, no, I think it was improperly handled, for sure. There's nothing wrong with having someone in an acting capacity while you're conducting a search. If he is the best person for the job, as a result of the search, he will get the job. But we have a fiduciary responsibility, one of our members of the commission, to, you know, live up to our promise of the city. And I mean, our main job is hiring. So we should have done a search, and if he was the best candidate, he would have been selected. But it doesn't mean no luck. In my business, I hire all day long. And you always search. You simply just don't give a job to someone just because they're there or because they're your friend.
Okay, so take us over the horizon into November or December. You're elected as the District Four Commissioner. Do you make a motion from the dais to launch a national search for a new city manager?
It's a very good question. I think it needs to be something that needs to be evaluated.
Okay, that's neither a yes nor a no, I don't think. You tell me.
Yeah, no, I mean, I believe we should have done an executive search. I believe it was improperly handled. And if he is the best candidate, he will get the job.
Okay.
And I don't disagree that he has proper credentials, knows the city. I'm sure he's a wonderful, wonderful person on many, many levels, professionally, personally. But you still have a fiduciary responsibility to do a search. And if he's the best, he'll get the job, and he shouldn't be worried about it. And neither should anyone else.
This is shaping up to be, at least for a couple of you, this is shaping up to be a very expensive undertaking. I looked this morning, Jackie Scott, you've raised almost $150,000 in this race. And Mr. Rebholz, you're not far behind. And you've all done quite a bit of fundraising. But my question to you, Jackie Scott, is again, against this backdrop and this debate in this race and in this city of development and overdevelopment, you're getting substantial campaign contributions from the real estate industry. I know you've been in real estate, and people who like to build things. Should that give voters pause that if you're elected to District Four, you're going to sort of lean in favor of more development in the city?
No, that's funny. I know that that's what the mantra is becoming. But you have to realize that I've been in this city for over 40 years. And most every developer that's given me a penny, I have fought against. I will not be controlled by anyone. I have no political aspirations other than District Four. I don't want to build my real estate business. I'm retiring. I don't want to go up the ladder in any political positions. I will do the best job that can be done, and no one will own me.
Warren Sturman, I'd like you to react to what Jackie has said, especially about the sources of her campaign contributions.
Like I mentioned, four years ago, it sort of got out that I wasn't going to put up with this overdevelopment. And a lot of the developers were friends, neighbors of mine, as a matter of fact, said, "Oh, sure, I'll support you. I'll support you." During that race, I got almost zero developer support. And I spoke to one of the lead developers. I said to this person, "I thought you were my friends," because Warren, you know what I do for a living? I can't possibly support you because, you know, I'm a developer, and it's already out there. You're not a developer candidate. Once again, I come out of the box. It was a clean slate, and I am getting no developer support. As a matter of fact, developers have at least two candidates that they are heavily supporting. I came within 1% of winning because I had community support. Now I have the endorsements of the police, the fire, the doctors, the teachers, almost a clean slate of neighborhood support. I think it's very important to see who people are beholden to. It was a clear message from developers that I am not going to put up with development. They are not going to support me because I am fighting them. And I don't need their support. I came within 1% without their support. I just need the community support to win.
And Steve, if I may jump in here as well, because I would like to share, I am a civic activist. I am not a politician. I simply aim to be a public servant and give voice to the people. Like, I give voice to my customers and my business to meet their requirements in terms of the software I build. I want to do the same for District Four. I have put $200,000 of my own money into this race so I can give voice to the common person in all of our neighborhoods who isn't represented by a developer or isn't represented by their lobbyist. I'm investing in the community because I believe it's time to give back and to make our community better. I am not bought and paid for by a developer. I'm not bought and paid for by a lobbyist. My agenda is only to meet the needs of the people. So, you know, I'm the guy who's been fighting over development in Fort Lauderdale for five years. I'm the person who made his name getting a petition of 15,000 Fort Lauderdale residents to demand a moratorium on birth until we fix sewer and water infrastructure so the pipes would stop bursting. So I'm the one candidate that the developer community does not want elected.
I want to make one more comment, Steve, about this.
Go ahead.
It is so critically important to our city that the next commissioner needs to make sure that developers, neighborhoods, and business people work together. This whole thing about, "I don't take developer money, therefore, vote for me," is ridiculous. Because, let me say this, because in order for our city to progress and to progress in the right way, people have to work together. People have to work together. And in my district, as the commissioner, developers, neighborhoods, and business people will be brought together to work together, and we will have much better outcomes.
And Jackie, I'd like to be...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Kevin Cochran, you've got about 15 seconds. Go ahead.
Yeah, and Jackie, I don't disagree. I think, however, the commission needs to establish smarter policies for growth so that developers can build and exercise their private property rights while at the same time, we have corresponding investment in the critical infrastructure that's needed to make the city work for everyone.
Okay, I'm going to briefly recognize Ed Rebholz. Try to jump in there. Go ahead.
Yeah, we need building. There's no stopping people from going here. We don't build, rents are going up, as they are right now. We're not, we're behind the wave of growth here. We need more building. We just need to give it, we need to stay away from the outer island. It's getting very congested in the areas that we're having traffic problem. As far as infrastructure is concerned, I spent a lot of time with the different department heads over the last few weeks and talked to sewer and water. And sewer has capacity. They have some problems, though. They have some critical problems that need to be addressed that actually is on the books. And if I'm elected, they will be addressed. But capacity here, if we fix some things, some water, too much rainwater coming in, sea water coming in, this wastewater treatment plant can handle another 75,000 new citizens. And then give us enough time to start the other site. Because you always should have duplicate sites, not single points of failure.
Understood, okay. I, hang on a second. I'm going to ask for a show of hands. If you see, I've got my hand raised in the frame, and you guys can do the same thing. This is just a way, yeah, here's the question. And I've heard this expressed by, I think, Jim Norgel. I mean, you know, Jim Norgel, a lot of people don't agree with some of what Jim Norgel stands for and has done. But he has been, in my lifetime, he's been one of the strongest, consistent voices on these issues, going back to the 1970s in Fort Lauderdale. I have heard Jim Norgel say that major development issues like Bahia Mar, like the One Stop, these things should go to a public vote. These things should be voted on by the citizens of Fort Lauderdale. Raise your hand if you agree with that. Okay, so on the basis of that, I would surely hope that one of you, one of you in this panel is likely to get elected to this seat is going to try to make that a reality. Let's start with Mike Lambrex. We haven't heard from Mike in a few minutes. Mike, surely there are people who think that if you do this, you know, it's government by referendum. You're taking power away from the mayor and the commission. So why should these projects be submitted to a public vote?
Well, first, if I can have a chance to just respond to the last, you know, the last question, I didn't have a chance to jump in. But, you know, I think it's funny that you got somebody like Warren who's talking about, you know, developers and being beholden to people, when you got Warren that is beholden to special interest groups that are classic budget busters like our unions. So I think it's important that we mention these things. And if we're going to call a spade a spade, we call a spade a spade. Now, on the second issue, I think that, look, if we put, I think that what we do is we prioritize and we put the really large contentious projects into the hands of the voters. I do agree that it does take power away from the commission as well. However, the commission represents the people. And at the end of the day, if we can get a more pulse on what the people want and what the people are looking for, then I say that we seek their opinion.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. I'm going to maintain order in the proceedings. I'm going to ask Jackie Scott. Jackie had her hand raised. Jackie, why are these public votes a good idea?
Well, I think when you get projects that have so much controversy, and you don't want people to lose confidence in the city and the people that are running the city and directing staff. But I would have no problem ever putting probably anything to vote of the constituents where it was appropriate.
Jackie, what would have happened, Jackie Scott, as somebody with your history in that community? What would have happened if that Sears Town project was put to a vote of the people? You tell me.
I don't know the answer to that. I have not seen the Sears Town project. Have you?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about based on the news coverage and what I've seen at City Hall, the two big towers that what is currently what we know to be Sears Town. And it's a whole big mixed-use project right there at Federal and Sunrise.
And Steve, maybe I...
That's an interesting question, Steve, because legally, I don't know if you take someone's private property where they have property rights and you say, "Okay, we'll let the voters decide if you can do that project." I don't know, Steve, that that's legal. I think there's a process in place to be able to evaluate those. You've got Planning and Zoning Board. You have a city commission. You have public hearings. So I think we have that.
Yeah, but I will add, because I think this is a very good question, Sears Town are very relevant. The issue isn't so much the developer is building a mixed-use development. The issue is people would vote it down because the city doesn't have a plan to adequately address the traffic situation on Sunrise and Federal, which is absolutely horrific. So I think when you put things to vote, it's the city's master plan, the city's plan for basically ensuring that when we do develop, because we will develop, as I said, we need development. I get that. But we also need the city to properly invest so it doesn't actually lead to a degradation of our quality of life. Traffic in that intersection is going to be horrible. I would have wanted, as a citizen, to vote on the plan.
Go ahead, Warren Sturman.
Okay, a couple of things that are listed. I do want to go back and speak about that union endorsement, the four-union endorsements for a second. But going forward, neighborhood compatibility isn't even mentioned by any of the other candidates. That's critical. I mean, I've been president of my neighborhood for 14 years. From the other side, some of the other candidates here aren't even members of their own neighborhood associations, haven't worked their ranks, don't know what, they claim that they're representing the neighborhoods, but they haven't been involved as officers or members of their neighborhoods. I've seen what happens when neighborhood compatibility is not enforced. That's a key part of our growth. We have to listen to the neighborhoods. Regarding my endorsements, I apologize, Steve, but it was mentioned. I got the endorsements because I've been here for 20 years. I've worked with the police. I've worked with the fire. I'm the first responder. I founded the city's search team and grew to over 1,000 members. Because of my work in community hours with fire, with police, I've worked on the education advisory. I've been vice president of my PTA. I know the teachers. It's not because I'm beholden, because of my record of 20 years of service in this community, that every one of them has recognized me, every one of those...
Okay, thank you. Hold on. I've got a quick follow-up question for you, Warren Sturman, just as a case of a question of fundamental fairness. How come the real estate people who give money to Jackie Scott makes her beholden to the real estate industry, but the unions who give you money don't make you beholden to unions?
No, when the police gave me the endorsement, they came in and they said to me, "Warren, it's your character." This is a quote, "It's your character. We know you. You're not new. We don't need somebody learning on the job who just came in here and has not worked with the city departments. We know it needs somebody who doesn't know how the city runs. You have relationships with the county, with the county commissioners. We've worked with you with fire department. It has nothing to do with me being beholden to them, but things that..." People, the other candidates, I've worked to add fire stations to District Four when we had the worst response times in the city. Station Eight was the busiest station in the whole country, and they were going to scrub our fire station. I worked with them to add fire stations back in there. We need more fire, we need, one of the only departments that only has two people for rescue. Every time a rescue is called, they have to send a truck also. It's because of what I've done. Education, I've been on the PTA. I've been PTing.
Well, we'll get back to you. I'm going to let Jackie Scott respond. Go ahead, Jackie.
Yeah, first of all, let me just say that when you get an endorsement from a group and everyone isn't interviewed, it's a very diluted endorsement. The police endorsement, other candidates were not interviewed. I would be proud of endorsements if it came from a full interview. That's number one. Number two, as it relates to real estate, my whole career in real estate has only been 20 years, not that long, and I don't do big massive projects. I represent people selling their homes. I sometimes do new construction. But to try to spin the real estate market and all this is fairly absurd because the public knows that Jackie Scott has been working for neighborhoods for 40 years. I say it, and I can prove it, and the voters know it.
Okay, I want to let Ed Rebholz get a word in here. Go ahead, Ed.
I want to bring you back to the topic we started on, and that was developing Sears Town. On the other end of that sunrise, there's another development that is in the works, and that's in the Galleria Mall. And they're talking about 1,300 additional units. And there's again, like Kevin said, there's no work on it, doing anything with the roadway. It's not part of the solution. We need to do that. We also need to be able to work with Dade and Palm Beach Counties for a mass transit system. We've been talking about this. I've been around in town for 30 years from the last time, talking about it, read about it, read about it, but very little is being done. And we need to get off the mountain. And there's some simple things that we can do that many big cities do. It's like make Andrews one way and another street the other way. That stuff has already been done, is proven, it works well. Denver, New York, Chicago, all the big cities, Miami does it. We ought to take some of that low-hanging fruit and implement it sooner than later. Then I'd like to see a much deeper, how are we going to enhance mass transit? You know, we're doing something north-south. We're not doing much north-east-west. Now, maybe there's a plan there, but I haven't figured that, found that plan yet. But I will continue to look for it. And if it's not there, we'll start one. Because I'm a New Yorker. I spent a lot of time, my business was in New York. Part of my business was New York. And we always use all mass transportation. When we went to go see Yankees, we always used mass transportation.
Yeah, and just to jump in there, because I think it's actually really important as well. You mentioned the Galleria. It's the lack of planning for growth. We have tens of thousands of units coming online downtown, and we still have critical issues facing our sewers, our stormwater, our water treatment plant, our water pipes, traffic situations. And we don't have sufficient planning in advance to support the growth that we know is coming, and that should be aiding and abetting the quality of life that we have. So at the end of the day, I'm a software executive, right? I've built billion-dollar industries. I've managed billion-dollar budgets. I've managed some of the most complex, largest public software companies in the world. And if I ran this city, like I run my companies, I would have been out of business decades ago. At the end of the day, when you're building a business, you have to invest. You invest in people, hiring the best people and actually doing searches, for example. You invest in physical infrastructure. You invest in all of the things that will enable you to build and scale that business profitably for all shareholders. We have to have that mentality in this city. It's a complex billion-dollar enterprise. I've done it in the past at companies all around the globe. And we need to bring that investment mentality to the city of Fort Lauderdale so that we can improve the lives of all of our citizens.
Steve, can I make a comment, the response to a comment that you made as it relates to Jim Norgel?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, what a lot of these people that haven't been in the city long enough know that 20 years ago, I believe, when Jim Norgel was the mayor, the city commission decided that they were going to build and grow the... the city commission decided that they were going to build and grow the downtown. And they took the 10 neighborhoods around the downtown and gave us an opportunity to do master plans to protect our neighborhoods. So this whole thing about growth was a planned event. And quite frankly, I think we've done a pretty darn good job with the neighborhoods. Now, obviously with infrastructure, everybody knows that was botched.
Well, exactly. It's the infrastructure.
Hold on, one at a time. Hold on, hold on. Jackie Scott has the floor. Go ahead, Jackie.
So as I look at what's going on, I think it's going to be critically important as we move forward to number one, protect these neighborhoods, continue to provide them money for the projects they need to do to improve themselves. They're the backbone of this city, make no mistake. But with that being said, we need to look at smart growth. We need to look at projects such as the Whole Foods on 17th, where you've got parking, you've got apartments. You look at the Greenwise Downtown, that's a great project. We need to look at those type of projects.
Okay, somebody, uh, somebody else with a contrasting point of view to what I just heard from Jackie Scott? I couldn't tell who had their hand raised. Mike Lambrex?
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I think, you know, I, I think, look, it all comes down to, it all comes down to proper planning. And at the end of the day, if, if we're not, you know, if we're not properly planning, then we're, we're going to end up overdeveloped. Um, you know, it, it, it's vital that we safeguard these development rules that we have. Um, and, and we insist on exceptional planning, you know, and, and it's, and it's funny that I hear about development and I hear about, you know, contributions from developers. I mean, if you look and you feel like the city is overdeveloped at all, or, or things have been, you know, I've had missteps in planning. I mean, look at, look, look who came off of planning and zoning. I mean, I, I think there's nothing more that says, you know, who's part of this, you know, who's part of what, you know, what some of the shortcomings we've had as a city as far as planning is concerned. I mean, all those projects go through P and Z. So, um, I, you know, I think that's important to mention.
Okay, I'm just going to pause here for a second and my colleagues, Daniel Sweeney and Suzanne O'Brien, in case they have any questions. Dan Sweeney.
Uh, Steve, um, I, you know, a lot of my questions centered on infrastructure and development, which means over the last 10 minutes or so, you've covered nearly everything that I wanted to talk about. So I, I don't, I don't really have a, have a whole lot more.
Okay, okay. I'm going to switch, uh,
Wait, wait, wait.
Go ahead, Suzanne. Sorry.
Um, I don't know if you guys have seen the stories we've done lately on the Summer Jams scandal, as the mayor called it. Uh, the city manager was actually telling me he's got two commissioners coming in in November. And he's concerned that whoever gets in might think that they could pull a Mackenzie, and he didn't use pulling a Mackenzie, but can do the same thing. So what, any, just whatever you want to say about Summer Jams, I'd like to hear it.
Let's start, let's start with, uh, let's try to, let's start with Kevin Cochran. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, look, it's all about fiscal responsibility, right? We have so many areas that we need to invest in our city and $30,000, $30,000 plus dollars on a concert, I don't think no sense whatsoever. You know, we have a program in the city called Green Year Routine. It's a wonderful neighborhood program with uh, the HOAs and civic associations organize volunteer trash pickups. And then they get a little kickback through the city to help organize it. We spend $30,000 annually on the Green Year Routine program to, to clean up trash in our states, only $30,000 annually. But yet we spend over $30,000 on one concert? Um, that's not fiscally responsible. In my business is, I have line item visibility to every single spend over $1,000. And there are specific policies and specific rules on what you can spend and the return that you're supposed to get on those dollars. You need to bring that level of fiscal responsibility back to the city.
Okay, next, uh, Ed.
Well, this, it's typically out of control, what Mackenzie did and $30,000 for, for a party. You can do a lot more. I don't, when I'm walking around and talking to people, I don't hear about what, where's the next party, whatever. Or nor do I underhear about, you know, $100 million for a Tesla tunnel. They don't hear that. They have more questions about housing and what are we doing about housing? And where we should be, be putting our effort and our dollars in that, and then in the infrastructure. Not these half a million dollar parties or $40 million, $40,000 parties. They want different things. They want nicer sidewalks. They want nicer roads. These things, they also need strengthening the code enforcement. Because that's a common complaint out there is code enforcement, not having the tools to make things, make the necessary changes. And I can talk first, first, first person there, because we've worked with the code enforcement for the last three years, too. And we're making some slow, slow progress in achieving what we need to do. So I think these parties are nice, but I didn't get invited. That's okay. I, I wouldn't want to be associated with those type of things.
Okay.
But I think there's other things on people's minds.
Okay, Jackie, we'll get to you. I, I see your hand, Jackie. We're, we're working our way around. But Mike Lamb, Mike, no, Mike Lambrex is next.
Okay, goodness.
So I, look, these, this is a little crazy as far as what we're doing with the budget. And at the end of the day, I mean, look, I'm in charge of, you know, handling families' life savings for a living. I mean, these people trust me to handle their money. So when it comes to taxpayer dollars, you know, we're spending a half a million dollars on a concert. Um, you know, to me, if, if, if the money is there and we feel like there's utility to the community, that's one thing. But these things got to go to the commission and we, there's no reason why on a commissioner should be able to have an independent, you know, judgment on being able to sign that type of money without, you know, without a full commission approval. So, um, that, that whole thing is, is, is not, not really right.
Go ahead, Jackie Scott.
Yeah, I, that was a huge disappointment to me when I found out that happened. I mean, it's amazing to me that that could even have happened. But I think at this point, what's going to be really important is that we definitely look at the recommendations of the city manager and the auditor to prevent this from happening again. The other thing I want to mention is that, um, I think that anyone that starts criticizing someone that's on the planning and zoning board, when they've only voted twice since 2007, has an awful lot of awful lot of guts, quite frankly.
Tell us a little bit more about that, Jackie.
Well, I mean, for someone to criticize me, like, like being on, being on the planning and zoning board, I've, you know, I haven't helped the city. It was, it was an insinuation. And I'm looking at a candidate that has very little to no experience in the city. Doesn't belong to their homeowner association, has only voted twice since 2007, but is asking the voters to support them. And then while criticizing the people that have given so much to the city over a large percentage of lifetime.
Jackie, I recommend you look at my record and you look at the experience I have. And I think, you know, you'll find very quickly that I'm a man of action and I've done a lot of things for the city and I've been very involved. So I would, I would recommend you double check and do your homework on me.
I, I have, I have my, I promise.
Mike, uh, Mike, uh, I, I have not yet pulled your voting record or those of your colleagues, but we will. Uh, but, but now's a good time to address it. Is she correct about your failure to vote in some elections?
No, she's talking about, she's, she's talked, so yeah, of course, well, look, I'm, I'm 32 years old. I'm turning 33 in, um, you know, in October. And so I haven't been very active as long as, you know, as long as Jackie's been active and been in this city. But at the end of the day, I think my record and what I've done for this city and my background and my experience and what I've given back to the city really, really defines who I am, only as a voter, but also as somebody who is a civic leader in this, you know, in this community.
Okay, I think if I'm correct here, uh, we haven't heard from Warren Sturman yet on the, uh, the, the question about, the others are all addressed. So go ahead, Warren.
I'm beating it dead. She all mentioned the same thing. Um, correction, it wasn't $30,000. I think Mike hit it on the head. I think it was close to the half million dollars. I don't know how this happened. We had something very similar in my neighborhood where one of the commissioners spent several hundred thousand dollars on a, I think close to like $800,000 on a project. There's rules in place, certain things over expenditures have to go to the city commission. This is not allowed. And, um, rules were broken. We'd have to, there's got to be consequences for this and this cannot happen again. This money could be used for bike lanes, could be used for infrastructure. I have a degree in engineering and I know uh, we need this money for our water system, our sewer system. We're going to have to put in a new order treatment plant. Uh, there's rules in place for this, but, um, like the other candidates say, this should not have happened.
Warren, uh, Warren, staying with you for a second, we've, we've publicized on our website a lot of the email traffic between the former city manager, Parks and Rec director. My question is whether in your judgment, the Parks and Rec people raised enough concerns, you know, screamed enough that this thing was spiraling out of control?
Are you talking about the Ben, the Ben issue or which, which issue?
No, I'm talking about this, uh, Summer Jams thing at Mills Pond Park.
Um, I, this, this, the city commission has to get a handle on this more than anything. This should not have happened. Um, the, um, the, uh, it goes up to the management and we're responsible for this, for the, for the citizens. Um, I mean, every one of the candidates here, first of all, they're all great people. We have a different perspective. They're not mean, they're not nasty, and everyone brings something to the table. I, um, and I think that I have, by far and away, the broadest, uh, experience of 20 years. And, uh, like Mike says, uh, you know, we have to have a financial responsibility and it's up to the commission to make sure this thing doesn't happen again.
Okay.
I don't think it's a matter of policy.
Just, just a second. Kevin Cochran briefly, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of policy. We need, we need, you, you have to create a culture, right? You create a culture in a company, you create a culture in the, as a commission for city government. And the notion that we are harboring and investing taxpayer dollars to improve and serve our citizens' lives needs to get implicated to every single employee in the city. Because then when Parks and Recs is looking at this, they will feel more confident sharing and disclosing more information. But if we have a culture of fiscal irresponsibility and waste, it's often just very hard for rank and file employees to voice their concerns because it's just part of what they experience every day. So we have to change the culture. We have to change the mentality. Um, and just hold everyone accountable for, you know, the efficient, wise spend of taxpayer dollars.
Okay, I've got a, hang on, I've got an accountability question. By the way, the clock is beginning to be a serious factor here. We try to cover, hold on a second. We've tried to cover as much ground as possible in the time we have. But I'd be remiss, the Sun Sentinel would be remiss if we didn't bring up, you know, the catastrophic events that happened in District Four with the sewer line break. And the way that Ben Sorensen responded as the district commissioner, you're all, you're all campaigning to be Ben's replacement. My question is, it, it seems very clear that Ben Sorensen, uh, inappropriately interfered with the staff at City Hall, maybe with good intentions to get the sewer work done quicker. But the question to all five of you is, is, was the situation with Sorensen handled appropriately? In terms of he basically didn't even get a slap on the wrist for what he did. And Ed, I'm going to start with you.
Well, this all gets back to control. And when I was running multi-billion dollar operations, we had control. And there's some procedures and policy and purchasing. And yeah, anything over a thousand, under a thousand dollars might have been okay. But a thousand dollar expenditure that's unbudgeted never got on there. One of the tools that I've used in my business lifetime is a ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning software. Most companies, most industrial companies have either SAP or Oracle in place just to have control. And this is, we bought an ERP back in, I think it's 2014, and we haven't used it. If you use these, these things and people electronically approve, it goes, speeds up the system, it enhances control. The other part of that is to write very clear, very clear, I say, purchasing procedures and have repercussions when you go outside of it. And take it a step further, it might sound a little drastic, but at Anheuser Busch, if we had found somebody and we found, in, in two of my breweries, found somebody cash on the side, we prosecuted them. And both of those gentlemen went to jail, not for long. But it was, it was a very strong message.
Kevin Cochran, question about Ben Sorensen.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, uh, we needed to accelerate, uh, the pipeline repair and Rio Vista. But there needs to be policies and procedures by which you go through a, uh, a defined procedure that protects and upholds our, our responsibilities to the citizen. Um, so as Ed mentioned, there, there's, there's software systems, contract like local management systems where you can actually go out and, you know, can accelerate the sourcing of bids and actually go through a regular review process uh, in order to accelerate and fast track development. Uh, basic business planning tools, basic business mindset, um, needs to be applied to this city.
Okay, next is Mike Lambrex.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we wouldn't be having this conversation, first of all, about Ben or any of these, you know, fixes to the park. I think that, you know, I, I think Ben in his heart wanted to do the right thing. And, um, you know, it seems to me that there was a misstep made, but I, I don't think that it was done out of malice. I think that Ben had in, in his, in his heart and in his mind that he wanted to do the right thing. But, you know, we get back to, we get back to talking about infrastructure and, you know, dumping 200 and some odd million gallons of sewage and, you know, something that's the size of the Exxon Valdez crisis. And, you know, look, if we had, if we had a commission that, you know, in the past was fiscally responsible, we didn't have an auditor that allowed, you know, ROI and, you know, taking money out of the, uh, Water and Sewer Fund for the general fund. And if we had looked at things with a fid, with a fiduciary responsibility, we could have upgraded infrastructure a lot sooner and not been in this position we're in.
Okay, next is Warren Sturman. Go ahead, Warren.
Okay, I'm not sure if the opponents know, know this. The money, I think it was Suzanne, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was like 800,000. And the issue wasn't necessarily for infrastructure. I believe it was for playground equipment and improving a park.
That's right.
And, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Well, it's not, so it's not that. I mean, uh, Mike's right, Ben wasn't malicious about this, but they say ignorance of the law is no excuse. We are limited to policymaking. We're not allowed to get into nitty gritty. There's a line that we all know that we shouldn't cross. And if the other candidates who are new to this, you know, I know that they're new, they haven't been here for a while. We all know that Ben, there is, we're policymakers and we hire, uh, four people. We don't get into policy. The, there's other neighborhoods, Rio Vista, it's my neighborhood, but we're not the only neighborhood. That money could have been used for other neighborhoods. Um, there are, um, consequences for, for doing this. And this, this is clearly should have gone for, for a commission vote. This is not something a commission could do on their own. And they can't, it can't be implied that this is a susceptible behavior. It's not. It has to, there has to be consequences for that. I'm sorry. It, it has to stop. We have to be a mechanism.
I want to add one thing that Warren said, which is, Warren, you've been here for a very long time. I don't remember you at any of the Rio Vista Civic Association meetings related to the, the Rio Vista water main break. I didn't hear you advocating for the full replacement of the seven point, 7.5 mile pipeline when they were only going to replace two miles of it. I didn't hear you at the city commission meeting, when we forced them to do that vote, to find that money. I also did it at AHF, so, um, you might have been in Rio Vista for a very long time. But there's a lot of things that's happened over the past few years where I did not see you advocating for the community.
Okay, I've got to, Steve, I've got to answer. I apologize. I've president of that neighborhood for 14 years. I don't know, I haven't seen you as, as, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be personal, Kevin. I'm not going, I'm just going to say in general, several of the members here aren't even members of their association, let alone officers or directors or presidents. I've been president of my neighborhood longer than I think anybody has been president in District Four. And under my watch, I've added parks and green spaces. I've added fire stations down here. I've worked on the traffic advisory. I've worked on the education advisory. I've been a volunteer first responder for the cert team. I founded the cert team and grew to over a thousand members. For the last two years, I was called out for the county. I led the county's COVID response, working with the Department of Health. I'm go, go where I am needed. I've been involved, but I haven't been president of Rio Vista. I, when I ran for office, I resigned. Uh, uh, and for the last, I've been involved, but I haven't been the front person. I've been very involved the last two years where I've needed most in COVID response. If everybody who's got, been tested or got seen.
Okay, uh, Ja, I, I, I see you, Jackie. I can see your hand. Uh, Jackie Scott's been very patient here. But I do want you to address the Ben Sorensen issue too, Jackie. Go ahead.
That's exactly what I wanted to start with.
Sure.
You know, having been doing this, being involved in city politics and neighborhoods for the last 40 years, I can tell you that Ben Sorensen is probably the best commissioner I have ever worked with as it relates to neighborhoods and the amount of time and effort he put in. I think there's a lot of people or a few people in this campaign that really don't realize the effort and the amount of hours you're going to have to put in to be a good commissioner. I can't sit back and listen to Warren continue to say things that are inaccurate. Warren did not start a cert. The Sun Sentinel uncovered that the last time he ran, and I just get tired of hearing things that are inaccurate. I know that Warren, when you filled out your, uh, campaign thing to run for office, you put your address as Rio Vista when you live downtown. You've given a lot of time. I don't want to discredit you for that. But I think you need to stop blowing out of proportion and be more realistic as to what you've done.
I founded the cert team in my living room. It was a program just educating people. I graduated it from, I think it was 2001. I called the city. The city said, okay, where do I go to join the actual team? And they said, oh, you got to go to your team leader. And they sent me a list and I was my team. There was no team. This was vetted four years ago. They researched it, the Sun Sentinel looked it up, and sure enough, it came out, I founded the team in my living room with neighborhoods from, from with neighborhoods from, from Victoria Park, from, from Crescent Park, from all around here. I, I absolutely
All right, thanks. I, I, we've got to, I've got to draw it to a conclusion. I'm going to do it right here. But I really appreciate, uh, everybody's participation. I, I know the format was a little bit difficult with so many, the multiplicity of voices, but I, we tried to be as spare as we could for the whole hour. And, uh, I greatly appreciate your participation, your questionnaires, and the best of luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good time.
Take care.